Hello Sharon.
Hello Will, you have unmuted, good for you.
Yeah, well I've done a few of these things.
Yes, very good.
I might want to change my background here, let me see.
And start your video. I have to go to participants at the bottom of the screen.
Oh yeah, there I am.
There you are, nice background there.
Well you know, I had one with, I'm on a board of Ivory Cape Health. And my last Zoom meeting was with my coffee group. And I had my big marijuana plant behind me. I quickly changed it, but a lot of people saw it before it got changed. Laughed.
Yeah, so did you see the thing from the lawyer saying, "No, you can't transfer the stock because it's mine?"
No.
Oh well, Nature's Alternative, which I thought was going to be a no-brainer, said, we got something that said, you know, I have, what's I gonna say? He said that they can't transfer their stock to Agency Blue because I have first refusal on that stock.
So I guess we'll just table it until they get their act together.
We'll ask Ben what to say, but you know, I mean, I sent it to Carolyn and she said, you know, it's, we do what we, you know, we just, it's a private matter between two people, so.
Well, that's the question, I mean, have they transferred the stock? And maybe it's an illegal transfer of the stock, but that doesn't mean it hasn't been transferred.
Right, that's right.
Maybe, you know, maybe we just, I mean, why did we end up with that anyway?
I know.
It's odd that they have to come before us, what are we gonna do, run background checks or something?
I know, you know, this is craziness, so. I think it's just like a liquor license. We have a condition in the special permit that says, if you change stock, you have to let us know who is the new person.
Now, that may be just an informative, just so we know who it is. But I can't imagine we have regulations that will allow us to prohibit transfer of stock.
I know.
That would be quite something.
It would. Now, I'm supposed to disable chat, but I can't figure out how I do that. One person is waiting, we can admit Jan. Now I have to tell her to unmute.
Here she is.
And there she is. And here you are, yes.
I have to hide my paper towels.
Oh, all right, if you must. I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to disable chat, and I'm trying to figure out how to do that, but it doesn't say. This can also be disabled by hitting the dot-dot-dot at the bottom of the chat box. Oh, I see, there. Yes.
All right.
Can I ask you guys a question? What I'm seeing at my own face is just this very narrow strip, which is okay with me. Do you see a broad strip?
No, we see a narrow strip.
You don't know how to fix?
Are you on a phone?
No, I'm on my iPad.
Um, hmm.
Curious.
I don't know if it has anything to do with the background you put up behind you?
No, no, it just has to do with.
It probably had to do with a camera of some sort.
Yep.
Oh, this should be fun. I almost threw everything else embarrassing in the background in my house.
I was just.
Comes Chris.
I guess that'll do.
I guess that is disabled. I have these long set of instructions from Courtney about,
Oh wow.
the waiting room and muting and unmuting and.
It's easy for her because she's done it so many times.
Yeah, and she's not running the meeting.
Right.
We could draft her, you know.
We could. I'm asking Chris to unmute herself now.
Oh, we got Christine.
Hello there.
Hi Chris.
How is everyone?
Good, how are you?
Yeah.
I'm good.
That's good.
For tonight.
Yeah, this is kind of, well, it's interesting because the participants keep dropping.
Yeah.
But, so we'll see, we'll see. And Chris, I don't know if you and I talked about this, but what we are gonna do is Mick and Trevor and Andy, who have to recuse themselves from this first meeting, are going to not join until after the first case is over. And so we're gonna take a five-minute break, and I'm gonna get on the phone, and I may ask somebody to get on the phone as well, and call these three and tell them it's time to come in.
Okay, good.
And then.
If you're gonna call Andy by his cellphone, you could probably just give him a quick text.
I probably could, he probably is looking at it, and I could probably do the same with Trevor.
I mean, I turned my cellphone off because I didn't want it ringing during the meeting, but I could turn it back on if you want me to text them.
That's probably a good idea, yeah.
But I take Andy because I do have his number.
Okay, good, you take Andy and I'll, yep, and I'll make sure I have Trevor's in my phone, which I might. And I want to say something about Bruce, but I do not want to say that at the beginning of the meeting because I don't want to do it with them not here. So, we will take a moment to remember Bruce, but we will do that when we reconvene, so that it's not interrupting. We don't have anybody waiting yet. And I think both Manny and Mick think this is going to be quite the adventure, so.
Have they ever done this before?
No. No, this will be the first, so.
You're gonna want to mute everybody while you're talking, obviously, you know that.
Yeah, I've got the mute, I've got the mute control. No one can unmute themselves, once I mute everybody, I will, I know. And I'm going to, and everybody enters mute, so, and I'm not letting the public in until seven. But I don't see anybody waiting at the moment, but it's still early.
Well, that's, I remember my first Zoom meeting months ago. And I was on about half an hour early, and how am I gonna do this? And now, if it's a regular meeting, sometimes if it's a meeting at seven o'clock, they'll come on at 6:59, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
At first, it was.
Sharon's running the meeting, I gotta go charge up my phone, I'll be right back.
All right. Yeah. Well, the funniest was that I generally do mine on my computer, but Mort's computer doesn't work for a Zoom meeting. And on Tuesday afternoon, we had, both had Zoom meetings at five o'clock. So, I had him on my phone, on my computer, and I had myself downstairs on the, on the Phil Richardson, I'm not gonna admit him till time. And I had myself on my tablet, so. What happened? That person was waiting and then he disappeared, all right.
If he took the time to look at the agenda, because I think he's interested in the one demolition.
Yeah, I think he is too, so maybe he decided he wouldn't come in yet.
I sent Rebecca an email telling her I'd bring over a package tomorrow for her, for her to please let me know when their next meeting would be, and if they thought it would be reasonable, be able to continue this to July 7th.
Right, right. This one is interesting, because even if we can't do it on July 7th, if they can't get it done before then, the applicant is under an 18-month delay
Yeah.
from the Historical Commission, so it's not like anything's gonna happen very soon. So if they can't get it on, it's not gonna be.
How are you gonna handle Alternative with that letter we got from that attorney?
Oh, I sent that to Carolyn, and she said it sounds, so she's gonna stay on for that.
Oh, good.
And she said it sounds like there's an internal matter between the parties that needs to get resolved before they come back to us.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that, but we can discuss that.
I'm sure Ben won't. I'm sure Ben isn't gonna agree with it, but I don't, I don't know, I mean, I'll ask Carolyn, that's what we pay lawyers for. Yes, that's the wrong, that's the wrong number. All right, I got Trevor's in there now.
I'm trying to remember the board for the Cape Cod cannabis, Rita was.
It's, I can tell you that, I have that right here. The board is myself, Manny, Rita, Jan, and Will.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much the only ones who are gonna be on at that point, right? Because, oh, yeah, you know, because Trevor and Mick and Andy are gonna be recused, so it'll just be. Mick, what are you doing there? I'll admit him and tell him he has to leave for a while. This'll be good, though.
Who's this?
This is Mick.
Okay.
Okay.
He's testing, make sure he can do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Hello.
Hello there Mick.
Hello Mick.
Hello.
Do we have video of you or just audio?
Can you not see me?
Nope.
Nope, we can't see you, you can say "start video."
Start video.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
You have to go hit a little button.
There should be a little button somewhere.
I'll try to, now can you see?
There it is, now we have you, yes, yes, yeah. Now you're actually not supposed to be here yet.
Recording.
Won't anybody touch the recording button?
No, we won't touch the recording button. And I will tell the, where did I just put my thing? I will tell the people that it is being recorded. So Mick, do you want to stay on and just lurk in the background? Or do you want to go off and come back on? Since we're doing cannabis first.
I think he froze, didn't he?
I think he did freeze.
Yeah, he's had that same expression for the last minute.
He's a man of great concentration, that's all.
Oh, I gotta let Carolyn in. I lost Mick in the course of letting Carolyn in.
Or maybe he just left.
Maybe he did, maybe he was just figuring it out.
Hi Sharon, hi Janet.
Hi Carolyn.
Hi Carolyn.
Hi.
We're all just figuring it out.
Yeah, we had Mick a minute ago, and then he froze and then he vanished, so. And he wasn't supposed to be here anyway until later, so.
Later, okay.
Yeah, he's supposed to be there later, so.
Are we gonna get video of you Carolyn? Is it not coming in?
Nope.
No.
You know what, all right, let me try it again, I'll be back.
No, no, just hit "start video."
Well, it's showing that, but hang on.
It should be.
Try this again.
There you are.
Yeah, hello. Now, Will, we know that is not a live picture behind you right now.
Right, and Chris.
I had a meeting today with Ivory Cape Health, I'm on one of their subcommittees. And I had an old, I had a meeting earlier in the week with my coffee group, and I had one of my cannabis plants behind me. It was about six feet tall, and before I could switch it off, a couple people saw and just started to laugh, you know.
Maybe for tonight's meeting, you should go with the wallpaper background. My paper towel stockpile in the background, but no, you got me beat on that one, Will.
Yeah, you did have your paper towels there. We were understanding you as hoarding.
Yes. You can't bounty anywhere.
Okay, Manny is here, we'll let Manny in.
There I am, you see.
There you are, oh my goodness, yes.
I'll get rid of this out here. I will, I will, I will, yeah.
You used some good fertilizer there.
Oh yeah, I'm pretty diligent with those.
Manny is coming.
Oh my god.
Oh yes, yeah.
Too funny. I see his name.
Yep, I see his name, he's connecting to audio, so, you know, it's an adventure.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm trying to follow the New York Times suggestions for how to have a Zoom meeting, like you're supposed to raise the laptop up on books.
Yeah.
Light overheads.
So you're not staring at the ceiling, I know, all that sort of thing, yes, yes.
It has been kind of funny with the amount of strange camera angles, either from somebody's chin or Monday night, I had a meeting where I only saw one member from the tips of his glasses up.
Those are identifiable.
Yeah, well, then there's that too. We had, we were having a firm meeting, and this was shortly after Zoom bombings were known, so we started using a passcode like you guys are now. And so the host of the meeting was like, if I don't recognize either somebody's cellphone or the name, I'm not letting them in. And there was this one ID that was Pipster.
Oh.
None of us knows a Pipster, or even has a name that you could remotely associate with Pipster.
Right.
So eventually, we found out it was one of our coworkers, and he said, "Oh, he said, 'I'm sorry, I'm using my wife's laptop.'" Now his wife is some sort of a minister, so I find Pipster to be an interesting ID for her.
Manny, did you get yourself unmuted?
No.
Manny, are you there? It looks like he's unmuted, but he's missing.
Maybe he left.
Well, his name is still there, he's still listed as in the meeting.
What about Rita?
Yeah.
How you doing? Good, how are you?
Yeah, we're trying to get Manny to, it's weird though, when you use those weird backgrounds, if you walk away from it, it's, it's like when you're walking in front of a green screen, it's a very weird picture when you do that. Manny, are you there?
He shows up as unmuted.
I have a little box by his name, and when I clicked it, it said "hide non-video participants." So, I don't know if he's unable to put his video on?
I don't know, but his box is still there for me.
I wonder if he just needs to turn his microphone up, because he shows up as unmuted.
He shows up as unmuted, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Mick is coming back.
You want me to give Manny a call?
Maybe so, yeah, that's a good idea. Of course, if he's trying to do this on his cellphone, then it'll.
Yeah, but he.
It would show up, though, you'd still get a call. Mick, are you, you back?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Now, do you want to sit here silently during this, or, we talked about, maybe you're not joining until we called you to join?
Well, I was trying to figure out how to get online anyway.
Sure. Sure, that was wise.
Yeah, no, I can watch you guys. Across the screen, you know, so. Yeah, and then, how many members do we have for the one, for the Thor hearing?
The store hearing, it's Janet and Will and me and Rita and Manny.
Okay, Manny's gonna recuse himself.
Not from the store, not from the, not from.
From Thor.
Oh, from store, well, it doesn't matter because we are going to have to immediately continue that one, because it has to go to the planning board.
Okay, that's fine.
So, oh yeah, the store, when Manny is, Manny, Thor, when Manny is recusing himself, and I think you wanted to as well, right?
Unless, if you have enough members, I will recuse myself.
Yeah, that's fine, I can do that. I can, I will have enough for that.
Okay, that's, yeah, I'll recuse myself because I know one of the butters very well.
Okay, right, that's fine.
A quality, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Coming on?
Trevor is coming on after we have done the general store, the Cape Cod Cannabis. Trevor and Andy both need to recuse themselves, as does Mick, actually. And so Mick is probably gonna leave us now, and then come back when we call you? Does that work for you?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so what you should do is leave now, and we will call you, or is it better to text you?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, well, we'll give you a call when we're done, and we're gonna take a five-minute recess at that point. And then you can jump back on.
Okay, all right.
All right, see you a little later.
So we only have eight participants, are those people who are waiting, some of them, or?
Yeah, there are a lot of people waiting, but I'm not letting them in till seven. And then I'll let them in, we've got seven people waiting.
Oh, okay.
And eight people in the meeting. And we're gonna, I'd like to, before I let them in, I would like to make sure we had Manny. And Will is talking to Manny, so perhaps he's troubleshooting it. And where's my stuff about, that I keep losing about, what I have to read about Zoom, okay, here it is.
Oh, my dog just left the meeting. You're walking up the stairs.
Yes, well, if you see the door behind me swing open just ever so much, that's, that will be my dog who goes in and out of the room all day long. If I shut the door tight, she'll scratch at it, so.
Well, my Labrador is what, she's ten and a half years old, and she's getting a little odd, like at night, she follows me everywhere, she won't leave. So I don't know what's going on with her, but she seems a little drifty at night, you know.
Yeah, yeah, my dog is 12, and I think this whole thing of her having us all home all the time has been a little bit upsetting for her, so that she tends to just retreat to me, to the office, because it's usually the quietest spot in the house.
Most dogs liked it that everybody was home, but your dog is.
Well, I think she just got used to, you know, by 8:30 or so every day, the house was quiet, she could have a good long nap.
Yeah, right.
And now she doesn't get that, there's too much activity.
Right, too much going on, yeah, yeah. So Will, did you learn anything?
She has.
I feel like we lost Will too.
No, he's here.
No, I'm back. Manny, he's on, but he can hear us, but we can't hear him.
Okay.
And he's trying all sorts of stuff.
Okay, all right, so I, I think.
Okay. Okay, all right, okay, thanks Manny. Yeah, Manny says he's gonna keep trying, but I don't, I don't, he's on, is he on this first case?
Yes, yes, he is.
Oh, I don't, do we proceed with Thor, what do we do?
I think what I may do, Manny can hear me. If you, I think I can make it so that Manny could chat with me. They wanted me to disable chat, but I think I could make it so that Manny could chat with host only, and then Manny could type in what he wanted to do, if he really wanted to do that. But I don't know if that's gonna be much better.
Right, or he could, if he can hear us, that's helpful. If he's got any questions for the applicant, he could even email, or like you said, he could chat with you.
Right, I could.
You know, I wonder if, I had this problem with one meeting the other night, I had to actually use earbuds in order to be able to hear everybody. I don't know, I don't know why, I think it was something on the way they had the settings set up.
Yep, right.
I don't know if that might help him.
Could have done this from before, checked everybody.
Manny.
Manny.
Yes.
You're here. We can hear you Manny.
Oh, you can hear me.
We can hear you. All right, okay folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
He can hear us too, so that's good.
All right, we're good, okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and admit everyone else into the meeting, so get ready, we got 22 people who are waiting.
Oh, great.
Wait and let everybody get connected.
My dog again.
Good. All right. All righty then. Okay.
I've got your video for you Manny.
Oh yeah.
There you are, okay.
There you are, yeah, now we can see you, okay. Hello, all right. All right, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, we are going to begin this zoning board meeting on Zoom. You will have to bear with us, this is our first Zoom meeting of the Zoning Board of Wellfleet, so we have a few things to tell you. If you want to be recognized, you need to raise your hand. If you are on a smartphone, you touch the bottom of your screen and select "more," and hit "raise hand" button. If you are on a computer, you hit the "participants" button on the bottom of the screen, and hit "raise hand" button on the bottom of the participants panel. If you need to rename yourself, because you're on a computer that is not you, you select "participants" button, and choosing "more," or by holding down on your name on a smartphone app, and you can select "rename," and we want only full legal names. If you don't want to bother with that, do not worry, the main thing is that anyone who is speaking needs to give their full name before they begin, so that our secretary can get that information down. So, we are going to begin with the continuation of 2001 Cape Cod Cannabis Wellfleet application for a special permit under 5.2 and 5.3.2 for retail use in the. Application for a special permit under 5.2 and 5.3.2 for retail use in the commercial district, and Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.3.1.3 for the approval of development of significant impact. The board for this will be myself, Sharon Inger, Manny Holliger, Rita Ciotti, Jan Morrissey, and Will Sullivan. It is the same board we have had for these all along. And so I would call the applicant, and wherever you are, I can then unmute you, but. So, do we have?
I know the COO is here.
Yep, I think so. I've asked Larissa to. Larissa, can you point me in the direction of the other people I should be unmuting for this?
Right here, Alan, in the blue shirt and glasses.
Alan is not, oh, there he is, over there.
And we have also George.
George Ryan.
Yes, as well as Matt Chrischani.
And. George Ryan, and anyone else?
Matt Chrischani.
Matt Chrischani is, where are you, Matt? Oh, there you are.
And I believe we also have Jill Schaefer, our legal counsel.
I'm sorry, again, I didn't.
Jill Schaefer.
Jill Schaefer.
A little ways down.
Oh, there, right there. Okay. All right, I think we've assembled your team, right?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, you may begin.
So first of all, I would like to thank the ZB A Board and the Secretary for arranging this virtual meeting. Hope everybody is doing fine. My name is Alm Cronfield. I am the Chief Operating Officer of Cape Cod Cannabis. And on the line with me also are the team of Simon Baker, Larissa Calaleva, and Daniel Lencioni, my colleagues, and. People we also just added to our communication, Jill Schaefer, who is our legal counsel, Matt Chrischani, our architect, and our traffic engineer, George Ryan. I would also quickly like to thank all members of the board and the public for all the suggestions and comments that were made at the previous hearing. We've carefully went over everything that was said, and we've taken everything into account and. Made several changes to our application, all of which I'm sure will improve our operations. So thank you, everyone, for the feedback that we got last time. I'm not going to go over everything in detail right now. I'm sure everybody. Is aware of the updated document package that we sent, and I hope you read the written supporting statement that we sent as well. But I would like to point out two few things that I believe are of most concern to everyone. So first of all, there were a lot of questions about security, security, and although we have previously. Provided a comprehensive security plan, some questions still remain. So for this meeting, we also provided a brief overview of the security measures that we will take to ensure safety of our customers, employees, and the nearby area. And I also want to point out that our security plan has been approved by the Cape Cannabis Control Commission. And. This is just to ensure everyone that the measures on security that we will be taking are in full compliance with state requirements. Some other concerns that the public raised last time was about kids knowing what type of facility this is. And to address this issue, we want to let everyone know that we will be having window films on each of the windows that prevent anyone on the outside of the facility from seeing what's happening inside of the store. We have also decided not to have any signage at all, so our business will not be advertised or announced in any way on the premises. And I also want to remind that our location is within the Marjana Overlay District, and that we are compliant with all buffer zone requirements, both off the state and local. Jumping to the topic of traffic, we've done further analysis and were able to obtain some historical data on the operations of the general store. And as this data shows, in particular during the summer peak season, will generate significantly less traffic than the former use of the location by the general store, or any similar future use that does not have the ability to micromanage customer flow in the same way that we will with the appointment system. So not only will we avoid creating additional hazards, we will, in fact, contribute to reducing traffic in the area, especially during the summer peak season, compared to other businesses that may be at the same location. Our package further includes some other benefits that we believe we will bring to the particular area and the town overall. But I would just like to point out that we strongly believe that we are in compliance with all district objectives, and we also don't see any negative disparities with other similar businesses in the town of Wellfleet that have already been approved by the ZB A Board. We actually think that in some ways our application is stronger. We were the only ones to address the traffic issues and have shown that we will not cause any additional hazards. And we also provided. To the town what benefits we will bring apart from the financial. So with that being said, I hope that we were able to answer all of the questions that remained open from the last hearing, and we expect to be granted all necessary permits for our project at the end of the meeting tonight. That will be all from me. Thank you, and we're happy to discuss any questions further.
All right, I think, Chris, did we have any letters, any additional letters on this project?
I forwarded everything to you that we had received.
Yeah, and they, and those were not on this, this project. Those were all read in the, in the prior meeting, so. Yes, okay, good. Now, I, if people would like to speak from the audience, you need to raise your hand, and I will call on you. I would say, however, that, you know, we would like anything that is new rather than rehearing the, the March hearing because those, the applicant has heard, and we have heard those, those concerns. So based on the new application, I'm looking for hands, and bear with me while I find them. Yes, if you, if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak. If you don't remember the, to raise your hand, you, if you're on a computer, you hit the Participants button at the bottom of the screen to hit Raise Hand.
Sharon, this is Will. Can, can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can I, can I ask a question?
I'd rather hear from the audience first.
Okay.
If I can, and I believe I've recognized Mr. Reed.
Good evening.
Yes.
Not quite sure why I have a tropical background behind me, but I'm here in my office in Yarborough. As you may recall from the last meeting, I represent William and Joy O'Connor of number 90, 90 LaCount Hollow Road. That is in the butter at the rear, but, but a property adjoining off just in the residential zone. When responding to the, to the new information, I, I've read, even though we received it only this afternoon, the traffic engineers' new materials, and I'm, I'm a bit taken aback by the conclusions that they reach. The engineer concludes that they will not generate any additional traffic, and they extrapolate from some of the business records of the old general store to determine an estimate of what their traffic was back in 2013 to 2015, assuming that that's a legitimate way to extrapolate and predict traffic volumes. The fact is that the general store isn't there, and hasn't been for quite some time, but the present traffic problems are still there. You heard a lot of testimony last time, expert in lay testimony about the traffic concerns and traffic problems at this, this intersection, which was described, I believe, as the worst intersection in town. But if you take, as I think you must, if you take today's traffic concerns as your baseline, then the addition of the estimated 281 additional vehicle trips per day that this business would produce is additional traffic, and will make the current situation more problematic rather than less. It is not a reduction in the traffic, it is an increase in the traffic. I think you have to deal with what's there now, not which, not which was there five or eight years ago, or which, which could be there from some other business. The fact is that there currently is a traffic difficulty and problem at that neighborhood and that intersection. This will add more traffic to it, and that's not a benefit to the neighborhood. We discussed last time the special permit criteria, the essential element being the applicant convincing you, and it is, of course, their burden of proof, but convincing you that the net benefits that this project would offer to the town and the neighborhood exceed any detriments that it will generate. We asked what the benefits were, and they've provided you with an additional memorandum today also addressing that issue, and they, they point prominently to the host community agreement and the money that this business will generate for the town coffers. But if you read the statute, and if, in fact, you read the host community agreement, that money is expressly and only designated to offset increased costs and burdens that this business will cause to the town, to the municipal government. It is, at best, an offset, a wash, if you will, to the budget, but does nothing to benefit or improve the rest of the town or the neighborhood. So what other benefits will they provide? They point to their community educational programs, to the enhanced security at the site, to the police presence they will have for parking, to the parking attendant they will have in their lot, but those are not benefits to the neighborhood. Those are mitigations for the problems that they will be creating by, by injecting this business at this particular location. Those are not net benefits to the town. The neighbors last time, including my client, but some others very passionately, expressed concerns that this was an inappropriate location, not just because of traffic, but because of its proximity to the residential neighborhood, to the. Rail trail headline, head park there, to the national seashore, and to the, the school bus stop right on front. Their response to that in their memo today is that none of those are disqualifying elements under state law. But that's not the question before you. The question before you is whether this is a suitable site. Section 8.4.2.1 of your bylaw, the special permit criteria, requires that you assess whether this is a suitable site particularly in light of the existing nearby land uses, that's a quote, nearby land uses. And for you to determine whether this project would support and enhance those uses, or whether it would detract from them. My client is a residential neighbor, neighbor. They do not, they believe that this will add anything of value to this neighborhood, and in fact, will detract from it. Now, I, I would respectfully conclude and sum up by saying that I think this discussion is just going around and around in circles. We're first creating a problem at this location, then to find, trying to find ways to mitigate its adverse effects. And I think if you don't create the problem in the first place, you don't need to mitigate the adverse effects. So I would suggest to you that this project does not meet the special permit criteria, that they have not demonstrated that there is a net benefit to the community over and above these adverse effects, that all of their effort is designed to account for those adverse effects, not to benefit the community. So my clients would ask that you vote not to grant the special permit. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Is there any, I didn't see any other hands go up. So.
Are we allowed to address the issues that were brought up, or?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. So first of all, Mr. Reed said that he believes traffic needs to be compared to the existing one. So judging from that thing, we must say that this location is cursed, because whatever business opens there, whether it's an ice cream shop, bookshop, whatever there is, it will bring additional traffic. What we're saying is that our type of business is a unique type of business that allows to micromanage customer flow. We can know, we can manage customers by segments of 10 minutes, 15 minutes, so if we see there is an overflow in some particular time of the day, we close appointments for this point of time. So we have the ability to manage customers, and we will know how many people will come to the store at each particular moment, and I don't believe any other business has this ability. Further, the location where we are, as I said, it's in the Marjana Overlay District, so the bylaws allow for the type of our business to be located in this. And the fact that there is a Cape Cod rail trail, it, in fact, is not a buffer zone requirement, and bylaws, section 9.3.4.2 actually says that the rail trail is excluded from the buffer zone requirements for Marjana. Retail. So that is just on, on that part, as to the benefits. Those benefits, that impact fee that we are paying is meant to be paid for the impact. So again, if we're not causing any impact, there shouldn't be an impact fee. And the money that we are paying, it can be used by the town to improve the traffic situation, the neighborhood. We also express our willingness to sponsor studies to make improvements in the neighborhood with, and to solve the traffic solution in the long term, not just find some temporary solution. We've heard the public say that this place is already bad in traffic, and that's, that is not our fault, and we cannot resolve it ourselves, but we're saying that we are willing to work with the town, and we're willing to sponsor necessary studies and some work to improve the situation, make some safety improvements, improve road markings, improve, improve pedestrian, crossways, maybe lighting, line of sight, and other things. So this is something that our business is willing to bring to the community, and. Some other benefits, as we, we said, are. Verified by studies that have been done. Across the country, and they show that locations like ours, they do not increase crime, and that, in fact, they increase property values nearby. And the fact that we will be there, it will also decrease black market sales, so there will be lower chance of diversion to minors. So we'll help the community increase the safety of their children, because the black market sales, back-of-the-trunk sales, will be pushed out. So those are just the, the few things that I wanted to bring up, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, so Will, now I think you can ask your questions.
Okay, well, I have the question of, of Attorney Reed. And that is, you seem to be saying that this is a piece of commercial real estate, and the proposed use is allowed in that zone. So are we supposed to just approve a, a, a business that's going to fail, that doesn't have any customers? Is, is that, that your thinking? I mean, it's a commercial use. If there was a restaurant going down there, you say, oh, you can't, you can't do that, there's going to be too many people. There's going to be a fancy retail store there. Oh, you can't do that. You know, there's going to be too, going to be too, too many cars. I mean, you, you, you seem, you seem to be saying you can't use it for what it's zoned for.
May I speak?
Yes, you may speak, Mr. Reed.
No, your bylaw sets a threshold, that if a business is classified as a development of significant impact, it requires your approval of a special permit before they can go in. It's not allowed, it's allowable. And that means that you have to review any commercial business that meets that threshold before it can go in there, whether it's a restaurant, retail store, or anything else. So this, this requirement of the bylaw gives you the discretion and the responsibility to make a judgment of whether this is an appropriate site for this particular use on a case-by-case basis. And any use that goes in there that meets that threshold would also require that same discretion on your part. The fact that you are given the responsibility and the discretion. The fact that you are given the responsibility and the discretion to grant that also means that you're given the responsibility and the discretion to deny it if in your opinion it is not a suitable site for that particular business at this particular site.
Yeah.
One more, just one more. Can you name me a business just off the top of your head that might be appropriate there then?
I have to unmute him, sorry. Yeah. Oh, he's still muted.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you heard that.
No.
No, I haven't conducted analysis of what other types of businesses might be appropriate there. I'm responding as you are to this application for this use at this site at this time.
All right. All right.
Understood, okay.
Okay, so Will, did you, as long as we are at the board, did you have any other questions for the applicant?
Me?
Yeah. Since you have the floor.
Yeah, well, I was just, just so, the audience hasn't heard. How did you arrive at the number of trips that the wealthly general store generated over the years that it was open?
So we were able to obtain some historical records from their point of sale system, which includes records of all sales day by day that the store has made while it was open. And those documents show the total number of transactions that there were per day. Sometimes they reached during July and August in excess of 700 transactions per day. Sometimes they reached up to 900 per day. And the maximum amount of transactions that we will have is 480. So some days there will be twice as last transactions as the general store had.
Okay, that, I mean, the reason I asked, I was pretty good friends with Paul Sousa, who was the general manager down there. Your number, I mean, I don't know what the numbers were, but Paul used to tell me it was really busy at times. So that does jibe with what my personal experience was down there. Thank you.
Yeah, with all, it was very busy during the summer. Yeah.
Anything else, Will, for the applicant?
No, no, I'm all set.
Okay, Manny?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. Will you have any kind of sound system, like speakers outside, that will indicate to anybody arriving that you can come in or anything like that?
Uh, no.
So there will be no music or anything?
No, nothing.
Okay. And on employment, are you still planning on having about 24 employees?
Well, at how the whole situation with condemning unfolds, but probably it will be by the time we open. Maybe around 15 people.
And then in the winter time, you will be open all year round?
We will be, yes. We'll be employing full year.
So you can't tell me about how many you would have in the winter time?
Approximately also 12 to 15 people.
Okay. That's about it, that's all I have.
Okay, all right. Rhysa?
I don't have any questions, but I found, reading through the documents, that there was an attempt to respond to the problems and questions that people had asked back in March. I found that the taking away a sign and really being very discreet about what's going on makes a lot of sense. And if in fact the traffic is less than what the general store generated, there really isn't a problem with that, I don't think.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, and Janet?
Well, you know, I have a lot of questions.
Oh, good.
Okay, I was looking at the lighting plan for the benefit of people in the audience that don't have it. There's going to be 27 new fixtures. They're all shrouded, which is important. All of them except I think the two emergency lights, if I'm correct. And also the pole lights, I wonder if you could maybe answer some questions about that. Do you know off the top of your head how tall those poles will be?
I cannot say, but maybe our architect can say.
Unmute him, wait a minute.
It might be.
Yes. I mean, so there are currently two pole lights mounted on telephone poles on the site. They're about 30 feet in the air. So we would be around that same height. And we tried to limit the amount of pole fixtures because obviously those cast the most amount of lights on the parking lot, so we want to make sure that we don't have, we want to minimize any light pollution that we're causing as much as possible. But we also want to make sure that the parking lot is lit well enough to be safe.
Of course.
So, you know, there are two pole lights sort of in the main lot in the back and one pole light out front. There are also, you know, at the existing parking lots, I believe it's a town parking lot, there are several pole lights in that parking lot already. So I don't think our pole light on the front is going to add to any light pollution. And again, we're just trying to minimize that out back.
Will you, are you going to take down the lights that are on those poles now? Because I thought somebody said last meeting that they're, they're not downward casting the light, that they're sort of off into the, they're going sort of up into the air. Are you going to remove those lights?
If we don't remove them, we will not use them. But I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure as to, I think one of the shrouded, one of the existing lights might be on town property. So I don't want to commit to removing that.
Okay.
But if it's on our property, then we can certainly remove it, yes.
So any offensive pole lights that exist now are not going to be used if they're on your, if they're not on town property? Okay. Um, let's see. There's, okay, so the pole light, the pole light that's going to go up in the front of the property, sort of off the corner of the beachcomber, there's three bollard lights there. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Those, those are like, are they right on the edge of the road?
They're set back a few feet. I mean, there is a sort of, when you're on the property, there's a distinct shift in the pavement between the town road and the private property. There may be a couple of feet back from that.
All right, so they're not going to be distracting to any drivers on that access road?
No, they'll be farther back than to the existing planters that we're removing. So we're going to keep them back. We're just trying to make sure that the walking path is well lit in the evenings. That's the intent of those bollards.
And I also did want to say the additional information that you all provided was really thorough and professional and well done, so thank you for that. So Madam Chairman, through you, the planting plan, the new planting plan?
Yes.
I'm wondering if Carolyn could speak or answer my question perhaps. Pre-existing non-conforming parking spaces, and I find it all very confusing as to whether planting plan that they're giving us, does that make them in compliance then with 6.12.1 and 6.12.2? Are we, are we good with that?
Well, I'm going to go to Carolyn for that, yes. And Council.
And I've been unmuted, right?
Yes, yeah, you're unmuted.
That's actually a question I had as well, because I know that there's a statement that was made in the materials provided that references a FELCO plan that was received or dated April of 2013 that talks about the number of existing parking spaces and how many of them are currently within 10 feet of the property line. And then they identify a number of parking spaces that will continue to be within 10 feet of the lot lines. What I didn't see was whether or not they're going to be maintaining that, whatever the existing non-conforming setback is, if they are maintaining that or if there's going to be some sort of further encroachment. I didn't see that on the plans. Perhaps, perhaps the applicant could answer that.
Yeah.
So as far as the, just let me pull up my file here, just to make sure I've got the numbers correct. Bear with me just for a moment. Lots of things open. Sorry.
Matt, if you're looking for the number of new non-conforming spaces and where they will be, I have it open in front of me, so.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yes, so the eight pre-existing non-conforming spaces are along the Cape Cod rail trail. And next to those eight, we will be adding, adding three new non-conforming spaces. So there will be, we will expand this line from eight to 11 spaces. And the other spaces that we are adding are in front of the store. So they are basically next to the public parking lot. So they should not influence the visual aspect of the area in any way.
That's right. So the ones, those are the ones where we're going to be removing the planters. We'll be putting, I believe, seven standard spaces and two handicap spaces out front.
Yeah.
You good with that?
I guess my question would just be, are they maintaining though the same non-conformity as far as the existing parking spaces? I realize they're adding a few more, but are they staying within the same setback encroachment that exists currently?
Yeah, we're not moving closer to the trail.
Thank you.
Hey, again, Madam Chairman, through you, I think this is a question to Town Council.
Okay.
When we're determining number of parking spaces, we now have a second floor, the square footage for the two office areas. The apartment is not included because I think it says in their contract with the the property owner, they're not allowed to rent it, but that doesn't mean they can't use it. So are we, how do you feel about that, Carol, the apartment?
So is that apartment space, is that something that would be in addition to the 340 square feet of second floor area that they have accounted for?
Yes. I don't know if it's accounted, I'm asking you.
Yes, that is, and I just, if I may jump in, we had the similar question at the planning board when we were in front of them in February. And so they have asked us to add additional parking spaces in case this apartment at some point in the future becomes occupied or used by us. And so for this extra space that might be used for some time in the future, we have two extra spaces in excess of what is required from us right now. So.
You know the square footage though, just so we have that information?
If it's, if it's an apartment, I believe the parking calculation, or I believe the the bylaws require two parking spaces for an apartment. And that's not based on square footage.
Oh, if you use it, is it, okay. Okay, I'm going to move on to signage here. So the Coca-Cola Wealthly General Store sign on a pole, you know you can't use that and you're not going to use it, but and I don't think this is your problem necessarily, but I just think it should be removed because it's defunct. And there's no, I mean, there's no more Coca-Cola being sold there, there's no more South Wealthly General Store, and it's just going to attract people coming into the plaza that have no business being there because they, you know, they're going to be looking for a store. So I'd like to see that taken down. I don't know that it should be your cause to do it, I don't know, but I'd like to see that removed. Okay, so on page six of eight, signage paragraph two, you say that you don't believe that standard parking signs are actually signs under our sign bylaw because they don't advertise use conducted on the premises, and I think I agree with you. But on page four, you say that you might put CCC, which is Cape Cod cannabis, text onto these parking signs and parking blocks, and then in my opinion, they are.
I think it's, yes.
As well, Madam Chairman.
Great.
I think since we have three businesses on the property and we will be identifying parking spaces by the businesses that they're serving, the CCC is only there to say that those are parking spaces for the cannabis shop or the bike shop or the beachcomber. They're not intended as an advertisement, they're just intended to demarcate the parking spaces. So at a glance, if you're, if you can see, you know, which, which spaces you can use.
Murray, our Town Council, could speak to that?
I think that, through you, Madam Chair, I think I would agree with Member Morrissey's interpretation of that, that putting the CCC on the bottom of those parking signs changes that. So I suppose the option either becomes to look at the signage as inclusive signage for the site, or perhaps they could redesign the parking signs to come up with some other means. I think they've got them noted as 10-minute express pickup, 30-minute express pickup, that sort of thing. Perhaps it isn't even necessary to identify what business those are associated with.
Yes, and if the town and the board considers adding the CCC to any of the signs, and if that, you think count towards signage, then we'll just keep all the signage sinus within the 25 square feet, which is the allowed space. Us, we provided calculations for how we got to this number based on the existing plans. So if the board does consider this to be a sign, then we will just keep this parking signs within the allowed 25 square feet.
I know you're at a distinct disadvantage with these signs because there are so many, there are signs that are, that aren't pre-existing non-conforming and you can't use the general store signs because those are defunct. So I realize that you're at a real distinct advantage when it comes to signage, and that's unfortunate. So I hate to bring this up, but you say that a standard parking sign is 18 inches, which is a foot and a half by one foot?
Yeah.
But then in, on the sign, on the plan where you have the sign calculations, you say that they're one foot square and you can have 22 of them, so that's 22 square feet. But one and a half feet by one foot is not one square foot, it's one and a half square feet. And 20 times 22 signs, that comes to 33 square feet.
You may be right, so we will just get a smaller sign.
Again, I'm sorry, you're just at a terrible disadvantage because of these pre-existing non-conforming signs.
We will either not have the CCC wording, as the Town Council suggested, probably the time limit will be enough to indicate the spaces. Maybe we'll just leave it at that and, but we will make sure that we are within the allowed square footage that is allowed to our business.
And just, it occurs to me that you're going to have a parking attendant, so it's, you can show people where they should park as well, so.
Madam Chairman, again, I'm working our lawyer here. Our Town Council, do you agree with the applicant that the whale's tail films on the window are not signed?
I do agree with that.
Okay. Okay, let's go on to traffic congestion remediation. Let's see. So how, I don't know that I know how committed, how long you're committed to doing appointment sales only. And I don't know.
We will be doing it for as long as it is necessary. We can be operating like that the whole time.
Um, because I was wondering, you know, I'm sure a butters would like to know what happens once you don't do that, but, okay. You say that as an additional mitigation measure, you list transportation demand management. I don't know what that is. I don't need a lengthy explanation, but just give me a little brief sentence or two.
Not sure what you're referring to.
It's on, I'm not sure what page it is, but it's under mitigation measures. You said if additional mitigation measures are necessary, and you list transportation demand management program. I just don't know what it is.
Maybe our traffic study, Traffic Engineer George can better answer.
All right, let me let him on mute.
Good evening. Hope everyone can hear me. George Ryan?
Yes.
So transportation demand management is, you know, basically having the applicant, you know, So transportation demand management is, you know, basically having the applicant, you know, employ measures to, you know, inform customers about alternate ways of accessing the site and ways to reduce traffic. So one of the things that had been brought up about, you know, having employees being shuttled in, carpooling. So, you know, employee trips, if you have two or three people per vehicle rather than one per, you start to reduce your number of trips. I know that the bus and public transportation system in the area doesn't have the best reputation, but informing, you know, typically you'd be able to inform, you know, how you can, how you can walk to the site, how you can take the bus to the site, what shuttles that could be provided by the applicant, private transportation services are available for pickup and transportation to and from the site.
Sort of an industry term that includes.
Right, it's it's a, it's a kind of robust program that is just designed to minimize the amount of vehicles accessing the site, and that's typically done by pedestrian access, walking, carpooling, and public transit.
Okay, I have, I think, just three more questions, and I believe they are for you. So I'm just curious, so based on all this data that you analyzed from the Cape Cod Commission and MassDOT, you know, when they were measuring traffic, when are, what are the hours of peak hours in the summer for AM and PM? I mean, it's not traditional nine to five workout.
It's not, so the peak hour or the, you know, the busiest time is typically between 3:00 PM and 5:00 PM.
Okay.
During the summer. In the, in the morning, it's eight to 10.
Okay.
But the afternoon is the daily peak time, so the afternoon has more vehicles than the morning.
Okay. Okay, last two questions. So you're willing to commit to at least two days of police details during the PM peak summer hours. I'm just curious is why you picked the PM, because I still keep thinking about Saturday changeover day. Are you willing to be flexible on that as necessary and not just PM?
Of course, yes, we will work together with the police department to pick the best hours for the police detail.
Okay. Um, you know, because you just listed PM, and I thought, yeah, but suppose you'd need it more in the AM sometimes, okay. And the only other question I have is that I had spoken with the police chief a couple of months ago, and he said what you're saying in this report, that he doesn't always have spare people for a police detail. What will you do if, you know, there's an ugly traffic situation coming up and he just doesn't have the manpower? Then what, who do you hire, what do you do?
Oh, as with that said, I believe the appointment system is our biggest mitigation measure because it allows us to control the traffic flow. So if there are any fluctuations in the traffic or some time of the day becomes overpacked, we'll just reduce the amount of appointments and less people will be able to visit our store.
Okay. I, hey, that's it for now, thank you.
And I have no questions, actually. I think my board members have asked them all, and also I too feel that you did a very thorough job of answering the questions that were posed to you in in March, and I thank you for that. So Town Council, I, do we, do we go close the hearing and go to findings, or do we? Not sure where we go with this, if we have further questions that we might want to ask from your draft.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be recognized?
I don't know. I do not see. I see no hands.
Okay, all right, then you could close the public meeting. If all that the board really has left is to deliberate and make findings, then you could close the public meeting. One thing that I did have as a leftover note from our last meeting, if I could just through you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I don't know whether there was any sort of stormwater improvements whatsoever. There was some some language that was put into the first, you know, first draft that was talking about like environmental conditions being improved by the removal of invasive species. But I also had a note about whether or not there was any sort of stormwater improvements or anything even being required. And I haven't seen anything proposed. I don't know if that's just something we can strike altogether, or whether the applicant has anything further that maybe I'm not aware of.
Do you folks have anything about stormwater? Did you do anything about stormwater?
I believe Matt, you have to answer.
Yeah, so I believe there are storm drains on the front where the lot is paved. In the rear, in the dirt lot, we do plan on regrading and putting down crushed stone, sort of as our main parking lot. And again, we'll be paving the hill going up to the upper parking lots. So that should at least mitigate and reduce the amount of stormwater runoff compared to the existing site.
Thank you. So is that grading and crushed out in the in your main parking lot or the rear parking lot?
So the front parking lot is paved, and the main parking lot, the rear parking lot will all be crushed out.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have other questions, Carolyn, from the?
I don't, I'm just going through my notes. One question I did have for the board, and this goes back to parking, and it might just be a matter of how the board traditionally rounds the number of parking spaces.
I saw that.
Okay, so I come up with, actually, the math working out to 26.113 parking spaces that would be required based on 3,900 square feet of area that they'd occupy. The applicant uses 26. I don't know if it's the board's practice to round up to 27, or where it would be 26.113, do you round down? Overall, they're going to offer two more parking spaces more than all of the uses would require. But for the sake of your decision, we should have the correct number in there.
Can I say something here?
Sure.
The bylaws, the bylaw specifically says round to the nearest toll number. So that's where the rounding logic came from.
I understand that. I know that there are a lot of boards and building inspectors too that would say there's no such thing as a point one parking space. So they would automatically round up. So I'm asking, so I don't know what what the board's practice has been there.
Yeah.
You say the text of the bylaw is the nearest toll number. So my interpretation of that was with 26.1, I could round down to 26.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Will.
No, I just agree, that's, that is the nearest round number.
Okay, thank you.
Just English.
I would agree as well.
Okay.
I would too.
Did you have anything else you needed to ask the applicant? Because I know once we close, we can't ask the applicant anything else.
I don't have anything else, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, all right, then I would like a motion that we close the public hearing and and go to findings.
I move that we close the hearing, public hearing, and go to findings.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right, so now we can deliberate. Carolyn has prepared findings for us, and I think probably the easiest right now is for her to go through and ask us the questions that we have, and then we can discuss whether or not we've agreed with these.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so if we, we start with the findings that you have to apply for a special permit under section 8.4.2. I know Attorney Reed did allude to some of those earlier. But if we look at, if you just bear with me a moment to get to the right page in the bylaw. Why don't I start with the the first sort of category of things to findings? The first category would be the suitability of the proposed location for this proposal, taking the following into consideration, the nearby land uses and whether they would be supported or damaged by having the proposed use nearby, uses of the site which would be displaced or preempted by this use, the adequacy of the roads drainage and other public services in relation to the location, and whether the site is more sensitive than our most similarly zoned sites to environmental damage from a proposal such as the one before you.
Okay. Does anyone want to?
As we're doing it in this fashion.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm not sure what we're being asked to do.
Okay.
This fashion.
Okay.
You're gonna look at them and vote on them at another point.
Right, so the question really is, is this a more sensitive site? Do we feel that this site is appropriate for this business, I guess is where we are with this? Are we comfortable that the applicant has demonstrated that he, the site is, is appropriate for this? Anybody have a thought on that?
I would, I'm sorry, may I?
But, go ahead, yes.
The information that they obtained from the sales, amount of sales from the Wellfleet General Store, based on the fact that it is in the medical marijuana overlay district, I want to make sure everybody understands that. That overlay district was designed for medical marijuana, but, okay, it's marijuana is marijuana, I guess. I say that, yes, it is.
Okay, Manny, did you have further thoughts on it? Will?
I agree.
Rita?
So do I.
I think the the amount of trips, the fact that it is in the medical marijuana overlay district suggests that the town voted that a business somewhat like this could be in this particular location as a, and the town chose not to vote on any other kinds of restrictions on marijuana, so.
And then next, Madam Chair, the next category would be taking into consideration the activity type mix and intensity, taking the following into consideration, whether the proposal contributes to the diversity of services or housing opportunities available locally, seasonal consequences, including addition to peak period congestion, service to local in preference to regional markets and year-round in preference to seasonal activities. For business developments, likelihood of year-round employment opportunities being created for residents, and the quality of those opportunities. And the last category relates to residential developments, so it's not applicable.
Not applicable, okay, all right, Will, did you want to weigh in on that section?
No, I believe the applicant has met those burdens.
Yes, I agree with Will.
Rita?
Yes, I think the appointment system does make it, mitigates that problem.
And Manny?
And the employment
Yeah.
is a big thing. Having that many people hopefully working in the winter.
Yes, and it is a, is a year-round business. I know that there have been questions about diversity because there are two other stores, but there are many other stores of many types. It's not that that bylaw was never intended to say that no one could ever have a second store in the same type.
Okay, Madam Chair, then moving on, the next category of findings has to do with building and site design, including consideration of whether scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated, whether reasonable efforts have been made to minimize visibility of parking and service areas, and whether any traditional public access to or along the shoreline has been maintained.
Will?
Yeah, I agree, the applicant has met their their burden in terms of those factors.
Manny?
I do agree with, they have met, they've done exactly what they said they were going to, and I think at this point, it's fine.
Danny?
Yes, was there something in there about, I was gonna say, is this an appropriate place to say that their landscaping plan, I think, has helped ease some of the burdens around neighboring properties, was that in this section?
I would agree, because I think that relates to minimizing visibility of parking and scenic views from public ways and developed properties, yes.
Yes, yes, I think they've met their burdens.
And Rita?
I think we made an effort to to do this.
I have to, there aren't very many scenic views in that place.
So then based on that, Madam Chair, the question would be whether the board finds that the benefits of the proposal to the town will outweigh any adverse effects on the town of the vicinity.
Okay. Will?
Yes, I agree, I think the, I was the one that raised this point last meeting, and I've read the memorandum, and I'm satisfied that the burden's been met by the applicant.
Okay, Manny?
I feel the same way.
Danny?
Yes, I do as well.
Rita?
I agree, I hope that they would continue though to listen to the people in the neighborhood.
Yes, and I agree, and I would second that.
Okay.
Okay.
Then one further finding then would be with respect to, I guess now we move on to conditions. And in the draft that is before you, I did build in any of.
I think I may be the only one who has the draft, but that's all right, yeah, anyway.
Then, Madam Chair, would you like me to actually go through them, or would you?
The conditions, probably for the benefit of the audience, that's a good idea.
Okay, all right. The adult-use marijuana establishment shall be permitted to operate between the hours of 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sundays for retail purposes.
You can just go through them, and then if somebody has a question, I'll I'll call on them to do it.
Okay, the special permit is limited to the operation of a facility as adult-use marijuana retail establishment for the sale of.
I can't hear you anymore, Carolyn.
She froze a moment.
Oh, am I back?
You're back.
Yeah.
Okay, the special permit operation of a facility as an adult-use marijuana retail establishment for the sale of adult recreational marijuana and marijuana products. The adult-use marijuana retail establishment may not operate, and the special permit will not take effect until the applicant has obtained all final license approvals from the Cannabis Control Commission. Prior to commencing operations on the property, the applicant shall provide the building commissioner, health agent, fire chief, police chief, and the board with a copy of the final license from the Cannabis Control Commission. The applicant shall provide an annual report of its operations to the board and other town officials no later than January 31 of each year, including a copy of all current state licenses and demonstrating continued compliance with the conditions of the special permit. Any change in ownership of the property or change in management staff and individuals with key access to the establishment shall also be reported to the board within 30 days of such change. The next one is a standard one that the board has been using, that the special permit is not transferable or signable to another party or entity, and shall remain exclusively with the applicant for the operation of the facility. Events that are deemed a transfer or an assignment of the special permit include the applicant's takeover or merger with another entity, the applicant's outright sale of assets and equity, majority stock sale to another organization or entity for which the company does not maintain a controlling equity interest, or any other changes to a majority of the. or any other changes to a majority of the founding member ownership or status of the applicant. A special permit may be transferred or assigned only with the approval of the board in the form of an amendment to the special permit. Smoking, burning, and consumption of marijuana or marijuana-infused products on purpose for personal or consumer use is prohibited. The permit holder shall notify the building commissioner, the health agent, the fire chief, the police chief, and the board in writing within 48 hours of the cessation of operation of the adult-use marijuana retail sales or the expiration or termination of the license holder's final license from the Cannabis Control Commission. The special permit shall lapse upon the expiration or termination of the applicant's license by the Cannabis Control Commission. There shall be a valid host community agreement in effect at all times during the operation of the adult-use marijuana retail establishment, a copy of which shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals prior to the issuance of a building permit or certificate of occupancy. This is, this is really one that could be up to the pleasure of the board. I know in the prior submission, there was a copy of a host community agreement. I understand that perhaps there has been some clarification or possibly an amendment to that host community agreement. So would the board require having the valid final copy of that prior to the issuance of the building permit or an occupancy permit?
A good question. I don't think it's a problem to require it, so perhaps that would calm the, make sure that we laid to rest any of those questions. I don't know, what does anyone else think about that?
Sounds like a good idea.
All right, leave it in there then.
Well, may I just ask, Madam Chair, would you prefer it when a building permit is sought? Or when they're actually seeking a certificate?
I think it's occupancy, because this building is not being built.
I agree with that.
Of occupancy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The next one is, prior to commencing operations, the applicant shall submit proof that the security plan and emergency procedures have been reviewed and approved by the police chief and fire chief. Any changes to the security plan and emergency procedures shall be reported in writing to the police chief and fire chief within 14 days of such changes taking effect. Applicant's security plan and measures shall at all times comply with the regulations and requirements of the Cannabis Control Commission. The applicant shall provide to the building inspector-in-chief of police the name, telephone number, and electronic mailing address of a contact person in the event that such person needs to be contacted after regular business hours to address an urgent issue, and that information is to be kept updated by the permit holder. The applicant shall operate on an appointment-only basis, and the applicant shall employ a parking attendant on duty during all business hours to assist with parking and site circulation. And I assume, Madam Chair, that that is year-round, or is that seasonal?
Well, we had suggested that we would ask, have put that in, in place, and then ask to have that revisited in six months or after.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I think that the likelihood of the need for such a person in January, you know, that is a burden on the applicant that I'm not sure we need to make, but it certainly makes sense now.
Okay.
I don't know, does anyone else want to weigh in on that one?
I'm with me.
Perhaps that's actually something I can roll into the next
Yeah.
condition.
Right.
Which is, following the first six months of operation, which shall be extended to include the first full summer season, if not occurring within the first six months of operation, the applicant shall conduct a post-occupancy traffic study and report back to the board on this study at a public hearing. And the board may determine whether additional traffic calming measures are to be implemented and incorporated into this decision. Perhaps we could also say, or whether any existing measures may be relaxed.
Right. Right, I think that's fair.
Okay. The next one is, following the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and at all times thereafter when the applicant is commercially operational, the applicant shall maintain an operational video monitoring of the rear exterior of the building. During peak season, the applicant shall designate an employee to physically monitor the rear exterior of the building throughout normal business hours. The next is, applicant shall coordinate with the Wellfleet Police Department and hire police details, as the police department may require, to ensure safe access and egress from the site. Again, another question on that one, Madam Chair. Is that something that the board would like to see just on a, during the peak season?
I would think so, yes, but I'm not sure.
Yes, I, I think that's fair. I mean, to, to, to require more wouldn't be fair to the applicant.
Right.
Shall I say between Memorial Day and Labor Day?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Janet?
One thing. And I don't know if this would happen, but let's just say that the next retail marijuana store to open on the outer Cape, could there be, or even on the Cape, could there be a big influx of people, you know, in September? If they open in September or October, if they open in October, just, you know, for the first couple of months until people get over the novelty of it? I mean, we've asked that question of others.
I see.
So I don't know how to work that in, just in case.
I see what you're saying, if they were to suddenly open in the fall, they might need, you might need the police detail then. Although I don't think the experience has been very large numbers on those soft openings in the off-season, but.
We just want to leave an opening in case that's a possibility, not required, but.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Then, through you, Madam Chair, if I added this to say that they'll, they shall provide this police detail or coordinate with the police department to provide police details that may be required for the first six months of operation and between Memorial Day and Labor Day thereafter?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, yeah.
Just to cover our bases.
Sure.
Yeah.
It also leaves it a bit open-ended that if the police chief finds that there just isn't this great demand in, say, February, it could certainly be with, you know, relaxed or just within the chief's discretion.
Right, that's why I like the fact that it's at the discretion of the police.
Okay. The next one is, the applicant shall provide a shuttle service to transport its employees to and from the site to minimize the demand for employee parking spaces, particularly during the peak summer business season from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Next is, applicant shall not erect any signage on the property with the exception of signage to designate handicap parking spaces, employee parking spaces, 10-minute express pickup parking spaces, and 30-minute parking spaces, which signs shall be eight inches by 12 inches in size and shall be installed consistent with the materials provided to the zoning board of appeals. Further, applicant shall cause to be removed existing roof-mounted signs for the South Wellfleet General Store and the local produce patch. And then, this, I think Member Morrissey and I were thinking similarly. I went so far as to also say, as well as the ground sign for the South Wellfleet General Store, the Coca-Cola sign. I do recognize, however, that that might be something that the applicant does not have control over. I don't know the answer to that, so I'll ask the board whether you want me to keep that in as a condition or whether I add some language that says to the extent that the applicant has control over the same, shall cause that to be removed?
I think that makes more sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. It wouldn't be fair to require the applicant to do something that the applicant doesn't have the power to do.
Correct. Okay. Then, nothing in this condition shall prohibit applicant from installing window films or artwork on its windows or door for identification purposes. In no event shall any signage, window film, artwork, or similar means of identification include the words marijuana, cannabis, or similar language that would identify the type of facility or nature of business carried on therein. Applicants' windows shall be tinted or covered with a special film so that product shall not be visible from the outside. Something that was discussed at the hearing back in March was a right turn only during certain hours out of the site. I think I, I left that meeting with the impression, however, that that was not something that was favorably received.
Right, I don't think anyone wanted that to happen.
Okay, I will delete that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we need to somehow make sure they don't do that? Do we, do we need to say at no time will they advise customers to make a right turn only out of the park?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that they really didn't want to do that to begin with, and were hoping that it was something that the neighbors would like, and it turned out to fail miserably, so. They wanted to mitigate, they were trying to mitigate, and it didn't, didn't work as a mitigation factor, so.
And continuing, the next one I had was applicant shall comply with the regulations promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission, including but not limited to security restricting access to individuals 21 years or older, requiring a valid identification to enter the premises, and proper disposal of waste and marijuana products. Next one I had was, within six months of commencing operations, applicant agrees to fund in whole or in part a feasibility study for traffic and safety improvements within the Route 6 right-of-way in an amount as determined by the select board. And a copy of the feasibility study shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals who shall hold a public hearing on same and determine whether additional traffic or safety measures should be implemented at this property and incorporated into this decision.
Very good.
Thank you, okay. The next one is that lighting shall be installed on the property in accordance with the applicant's lighting plan dated 4/25/2020. Applicant shall install ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps at all pedestrian crossings internal to and serving the project site on an annual basis, or more frequently if conditions so require, to maintain proper sightlines and to satisfy surveillance requirements of the Cannabis Control Commission. Applicant shall remove invasive grasses and seedlings in the proposed parking locations and in the north side of the building. Applicant shall also trim landscaping to improve vehicular line of sight at exits and entrances to the property.
Good.
Yes, yes, Janet.
Go back to your lighting, section about lighting. My plan is dated 5/28/20, you said 4/25/2020?
Oh.
Okay, yeah, it is, it was updated again, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, so, I'm sorry, what, 5/28?
20, yeah.
5/28/20, okay.
Should we reference the planting plan, which also has that date?
The same, 5/28?
Yeah, 5/28, they did update the both, both plans.
Okay, I'll make sure that change is made. Applicant shall plant new native tree species in accordance with the landscaping plan dated, and that is 5/28/20, right?
Right.
The existing perimeter vegetation will not be removed or modified. Together, the new and existing landscaping shall be maintained so as to form a natural vegetative buffer and shield the parking from adjacent streets and properties. Applicant shall replace and replant any trees that do not thrive or survive two full planting seasons. Okay. Applicant shall monitor the property at regular intervals on a daily basis to discourage and prevent trespassing, loitering, or consumption of marijuana on premises. And if there are any additional conditions the board would like me to include, I'm happy to do so.
Will?
Well, I have a question on, why are we being tasked? It might be a re, I just forget. Why are we being tasked to, to approve a change in the ownership of the underlying LLC? We don't have any regulations. If we, if we said no, we'd be acting capriciously without, without some regulations. We don't do background checks on people. So I'm just, is there a reason why that's in there?
Madam Chair, through you, I, I think there's, I think there's possibly two reasons. One is, a typical special permit, once it's exercised and recorded, tends to run with the land. And whoever, you know, if this were any other business but, but marijuana for the moment, you know, if this was just the Wellfleet General Store, now becoming the Wellfleet Convenience Store, or whatever the case may be, there may be no need in those circumstances generally to ever come back before the zoning board, because you're right, we don't typically govern ownership of property. We, we just govern the uses. Marijuana, similar to liquor licenses, are treated a little bit differently in that they are based in part on, are giving a special permit to known entities or individuals who have demonstrated to us that they are capable of performing this, this business in a responsible way. To be perfectly honest, most of this is all going to fall on, fall to the state, because they're going to have to seek approval from the state to transfer the license.
Yeah.
We locally, we have a provision that mirrors this in the host community agreements as well, because the select board, they want to know, who are we dealing with? You know, if we negotiated a deal with Jane and John Doe, for example, we want to know that three years from now, if there's a problem at this establishment, that Jane and John Doe are still the people we should reach out to and have a conversation about the issue. So we're not so much, I, I think to your, to your question, Mrs. Sullivan, we cer, I can't imagine a situation where we would not agree to transfer a special permit based just on a change of ownership if everything, you know, if the operation was being conducted responsibly.
Fine, thanks.
Okay. Were there any other additions to the conditions?
Pretty comprehen, pretty comprehensive to me.
I'm sorry, Aretha, I didn't hear that.
I said, it sounds pretty comprehensive to me.
Okay. Okay, and, and Carolyn, I did have one thing in the draft findings that I had. Number 28, the planning board did not provide a recommendation. That actually isn't true. The planning board did recommend the project at our March 6, 2020 meeting. We had a letter from the planning board saying they approved of the project.
They did, okay.
It was their March 20, March 6 meeting.
Their March 6 meeting, at their March 6 meeting, which was referred to us for March 12th. But yeah, at their March 6 meeting, they approved the, the plan.
Okay, thank you, I'll make that change.
Sure. All right. Okay. If there is no further decision, I need a motion to accept the findings.
I shall move.
All right, in a second. All right, we have a
I didn't catch you second. I didn't catch you seconded.
We have, Janet moved and Will seconded.
Good enough.
And based on the findings, I need a motion to grant the special permit.
I shall move.
Oh, we have to vote on the findings, I'm sorry. Voting on the findings? Voting to approve the findings? Aye?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
We're doing this basically as a, as a remote meeting? Everything has to be by roll call?
Okay, Will.
I vote in the affirmative.
Okay, Janet?
I vote aye.
Rhetha?
I vote yes.
Manny?
Manny votes yes.
And so does Sharon vote yes. Okay. Then, based on that, I need a motion to grant the special permit.
I will move to grant the special permit.
Okay, Manny has moved to grant it, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
Oh, we'll second it. All right, and I'm getting my roll call. Will?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Rhetha?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Sharon is aye. All right, congratulations. I'll unmute you for a minute so you can say goodbye.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you for the time and for the decision.
Nick, Chris? What, what hap, what, I can't hand him forms or anything like that, because obviously we're in a million different locations. So where do they next come? What is the next step for them?
I am going to type up the meeting minutes and get filed with the town clerk, and I will notify all, everybody in their party that they can come and pick up paperwork in the building department pickup box at the DPW.
Thank you.
And that will start the 21-day appeal process.
All right, right.
And, and Madam Chair?
By the way, Sharon, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm going to call you first and have you sign it.
Okay, I will sign it first. Right, okay. And Carolyn?
I was just going to say, Madam Chair, and I will clean up this draft decision to incorporate all the changes tonight so that you and Christine have a clean copy of this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And did I, and Madam Chair? If you are going to be the only one that, that signs the decision, are you typically the only one who signs? Or do you take a vote to authorize just one of you to sign?
Typically, we have, I typically sign because typically we've read the decision here, which, as we did tonight. So I think that it's probably, I don't need a vote to sign it, but I can certainly take one.
Do we have to move to accept this, the find, the special permit? No?
We did that.
You did.
I was sitting there for a minute.
But just, just to be safe, I need a motion that I can sign the findings.
I moved.
All right, Janet moved second? Second, Manny? Will?
I, I, I vote aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Rhetha?
Aye.
And Manny? Do I have to vote? I'm aye also. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, what we are going to do now, because we had two members who, three members who had to recuse themselves from this hearing, and I told them to join later, because we're actually going to take a five-minute recess so that we can notify those other members of our board that they can come back on in. And those of you who are finished can go ahead and leave. And we will reconvene. It is now 8:27, so we will reconvene probably at 8:35 once we get our other members onto the, onto the call. All right, so, and I think I can just activate Mick, and you're going to text Andy, and I will call Trevor.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Yes? Do you, do you need me for the remainder of the meeting?
I need you because of the question on Nature's Alternative.
No problem.
Thank you.
Sharon? I, I, I just suggest that we then
Wait, 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 I called Trevor. Hang on, hang on. Okay, Trevor, we're finally finished. We've finally granted them their, their permit, so come on. I'm sure that's the case. See you soon. Bye-bye. Yes, Will?
I just suggest that we take, the next item we take out of order and bring up that, that transfer rather than keep Carolyn with us for another couple hours perhaps.
I don't think it's going to be that, but I'm perfectly willing to do that.
I, just a thought.
Yeah, yeah. How does the rest of you feel?
I do.
Yeah, okay. That's good. Then, then you can. All right, let me grab that one.
That was number four on our
That was. I gotta admit, Trevor. Admit. Where did you go, Trevor? Trevor, I've unmuted you.
Thank you.
We're waiting for, I've got to unmute Mick now.
Hello?
Hello, Mick, you're on again.
All right, there you are.
Waiting for Andy.
I did call Andy. I got ahold of him, so.
Okay. I'll watch the waiting box for a minute to see. And we're going to take these out of order. We're going to jump, jump to 1923 Nature's Alternative so that we can, because it's the one I need Carolyn for. And then she can go off. And there's Andy. Let me find him. Okay, I think we are all here, and I now can say what I was not able to say earlier when we weren't all joined, is that this is our first meeting without our good friend Bruce. And I wanted us to just take a minute to remember him and his contributions to this board and to understand that this is still a board in mourning over the loss of someone we should not have lost in the way that we did. So I just wanted to remember him, and in this world we're in now, we can't go anywhere and celebrate his life, but we, we will not forget him.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay. Now I'm going to call 1923 Nature's Alternative, Amendment for Operation of a Retail Cannabis Store pursuant to Special Permit Condition 6, which we just talked about, to approve transfer of stock ownership. And I believe it is Mr. Zender, correct?
I'm muted. Hello, Madam Chairwoman. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Before we start, I'd like to just, one small story about Bruce. I, I told Sharon this earlier, but the last time I spoke to Bruce, I walked up to him at the end of your last live meeting, and I, and I asked him, I told him that I really would like to have known what Roger thought of the meeting that you were just considering at that moment. And now I'm going to sit here and think, I wish I knew what Roger would have said, and I think I know what Bruce would have said, but I really wouldn't know. And, and I don't want to let that pass while saying this to the board. I miss him, and I will miss him as we go along. This is an application for transfer of
Can I just interrupt one second? We need a board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, good. The board is myself, Mick, Trevor, Will, and Manny.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Again, for the record, my name is Ben Zender. I'm here on behalf of Nature's Alternative. And with me on the line are Pat Casey, who is the President of Nature's Alternative, Nick Salvador, who is the Treasurer of Nature's Alternative, as well as Matt Wilk, who is the manager of the operation, or will be the manager of the operation in Wellfleet. As you may recall, in, in your decision approving a special permit for this operation, you imposed a condition, condition number six, which stated that the permit, the special permit is not transferable or assignable to another party or entity, and that in the event of any transfer, the special permit may be transferred or assigned only with the approval of the board in the form of an amendment to the special permit. And that's what's in front of you right now. For the board's edification, I submitted with the application a A, which actually set forth all of the iterations of the company from the time that it was created, so that you could see the change in ownership. And this same document was presented to the Board of Selectmen in the form of a request to amend the Community Host Agreement, or the Host Community Agreement. And the Board of Selectmen did vote to approve the amendment to reflect this, this new ownership. The Amendment A identifies that Nature's Alternative, Inc., which is still the permit holder, and still will be the permit holder, has had an underlying transfer of its, of its stock, so that now the stock is 99.99% owned by an LLC known as Aspen Blue LLC, which is a Rhode Island Limited Partnership. And then I've identified in addendum A the ownership of that LLC, of which 25% is Nick Salvador, whom this board is familiar with from the prior application, Pat Casey, who is the, who is the President. There's a woman, Francesca Turner, owns 25%. 5% is owned by Mal Salvador. 10% by Wilmer Properties LLC. 5% by Wolfden Holdings LLC, and by Ralph Schuster Metals, Inc. And then I do go further on and identify who the owners of those entities are for, for the record for this board. I have to say that I tend to agree with some comments that were, that were, that came up earlier in connection with your first application. I don't think this board really is in a position to try to evaluate underlying ownership, you know, in a permit, especially where the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, actually undertakes a strenuous and thorough review of all candidates, including any change, if I believe it's more than 5% of the ownership of an applicant. So, and then following that, the Board of Selectmen also interviews and reviews the ownership as a part of their review process. I understand Carolyn's point, and I think it's a very valid point, that in, in issuing a special permit, there are some permits that you want to have run with an applicant and not with the land. But in this particular case, I think it, it becomes very cumbersome for this board to have to approve every change of ownership, especially in, in sort of the fledgling nature of this industry, when permits are being transferred on a very, very rapid basis as they become, as they come online in different parts of the Commonwealth. Part of that is because there's a limitation on the Commonwealth on the number of permits that anyone, individual, or entity can hold. So there's a, every location in the Commonwealth that's being permitted is, is in some way, shape, or form connected to either grow operations, wholesale operations, possibly medical cell operations, and these permits are changing on a fairly frequent basis. And so it's difficult for this board to, to deal with those issues. I do have Pat Casey and Matt Wilks and Nick Salvador on the line. If the board has any questions for them, we'd like to answer them for you to explain either the transfer of ownership or the nature of the company. And I'll stand by to answer any questions that I can as counsel, and I appreciate you all hearing this application. Thank you.
I guess, I do have one letter on this. I'm not sure how terribly relevant it is, but it does say, "I am writing to you regarding Nature's Alternative, Inc. 1923 Amendment. I am in a butter directly across the street on Route 6. I attended an earlier informative meeting during which all my concerns were addressed satisfactorily, and the people involved seemed organized and frank. I have never used cannabis and will not be a customer, but I have absolutely no objection to this operation of a retail cannabis store at the site chosen, I do hope. So I hope this amendment will be approved." And then we also had a letter, and I don't think I can find the copy of it right now, from someone saying that seeming to dispute the ownership of this. That there was Wait a minute, go, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Dan.
Can you, can, can the board hear me?
Yes.
I, I, I am actually in receipt of that letter as well. I was forwarded a copy by counsel. The letter states that there is a dispute regarding a transfer of stock ownership from a previous owner based on a stock purchase agreement, the terms of a stock purchase agreement involving the date by which permits would be obtained. And I understand that there's a dispute among prior owners about whether or not the stock should or should not have been transferred, or should be transferred back. I don't think that's an issue for this board. If in fact there is a valid dispute about stock having to be transferred, and if in fact the stock is transferred, you know, to another entity, I think that entity is going to have to come in front of this board pursuant to the terms of your special permit and, and request a further amendment of the special permit. But right now, based on just the language of that letter itself, it really merely alleges that there's a dispute about whether or not stocks should be transferred to another entity or a prior owner.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's a help. Do I have anyone from the audience who wants to speak to this application? If so, raise your hand, and I will unmute you. Okay, I don't see any hands on this one. All right. I'm, I'm going to actually refer first to counsel for a legal opinion on, on this, and then I'll go to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For, for the record, because I don't think it has been stated, that letter was from Attorney John Bradley from Prince Labelle, saying that he represents Stuart Bernstein. And I think attorneys underdid characterize it accurately, that there is clearly some sort of a disagreement or dispute over a stock purchase agreement dating back to July of 2018. And as a result of that, they feel that there is no right to transfer this license or the special permit to Aspen Blue, or to any other party other than, back to Stuart Bernstein. I, I like a lot of issues that tend to crop up between private parties. There are certain things that are just not within the zoning board of appeals purview to be able to adjudicate, and, and whether or not there is a valid dispute over the stock purchase agreement or not, I'm certainly not in a position to know, nor are any members of the board in a position to know. So I think that leaves the board in either one of two positions. One would be to do as Attorney Ben Zender suggested, which is the board could still go forward and approve this transfer. The special permit is still in the name of Nature's Alternative, Inc. And if there is, if it's determined or the private parties do pursue this further and it's determined that Aspen Blue was not entitled to take ownership or transfer of the stock, then someone would have to come back before this board to transfer the stock ownership or the special permit to somebody else, whoever that proper entity is. The other option is of course to let this private dispute play out. And eventually somebody tells us who is right or who is wrong. I don't know how realistic that is. I don't know whether this is simply a letter that has been drafted by an attorney saying there is a dispute. There could be pending litigation. There may never be any litigation. There may be some sort of further amendment to that stock purchase agreement, none of which the ZBA will ever be privy to. But then also further, if there is some merit to this stock purchase agreement dispute, the Cannabis Control Commission is going to look more deeply into this than the zoning board of appeals would be required to look into. So this, you know, the transfer of ownership stock, all of that not only requires approval of the ZBA and approval of the Select Board and the Host Community Agreement, which apparently the Select Board has granted, but it also is going to require the approval of the Cannabis Control Commission. So I suppose a third option I could offer to the board is that you could approve this request subject to this transfer also being approved by the Cannabis Control Commission, which it must be.
Okay, thank you. That was very, very clear. I'm going to go to the board for thoughts on this. Will?
Yeah, I agree with the third alternative is that we should grant this request. I've been, prior to being here in Wellfleet, I did zoning work like Carolyn did for 42 years. And I've seen enough examples where people try to get leverage in other ways. And I'm not sure, I'm not saying that's what Mr. Bradley's client is doing, but I agree that we should grant this subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission.
Okay, Manny?
I feel the same way. The third is, I think, the right way to go.
Mick?
Yeah, I feel the same way. This is a dispute between two people over money. So we can do, we can go ahead and approve the special permit.
Trevor?
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well.
Andy?
Yes, I think the third option is the way to go.
Rita? Rita?
Yes, I agree.
And Janet?
Number three.
I tend to agree as well. I don't think we can get into private disputes and that's fine. Carolyn, can you? I came to you on this one partly because I had no idea how to write findings for this one, so.
I don't, I think, actually, Madam Chair, I don't think it requires a finding as much as an amendment to the existing special permit for this purpose. I think it can be very short and sweet. And I could certainly draft something for you and get that to Christine.
Yeah, that would be great. Do we now, can we then close the hearing and do we need to vote findings that we don't, you know?
You don't need to vote any findings, but you do need to close the public hearing unless there's anyone out there.
Anyone out there? Okay, let us close the public hearing. I need a motion to grant the amendment.
You need a motion to close.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to close. And this has to be from the people on the board. So that is the five of you. Trevor moves to close. Second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? We can wave on this. I-
We're gonna do it. We're gonna do it vote by vote, remember?
We're gonna, but I don't think we need to do that to close the hearing, or do we? Carolyn, do we need to, okay.
It would be cleaner if you did that.
All right, we want to be clean. All right, Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And I say aye. And then having heard that, I need a motion to grant the amendment.
I will make a motion to grant the amendment.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor. Will?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Aye.
Mick, Mick seconded.
Thank you.
Will is an aye, Manny?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And Sharon is an aye. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we will go back to there are too many pieces of paper. All right, we're done with that one. We've got to go back to my agenda. It's, we're going to Dow Drive, but I have to find the number. Hang on, just-
Madam Chair, I will sign out and wish you all the best.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your night. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Go Dow Drive, but I, and it is yeah. I don't have a number on it either.
1926.
Okay. All right, now I've had correspondence with the applicant on this one because I've set the board. I didn't have anybody who recused. So the board will be Will, Mick, Trevor, Manny, and myself. I have had correspondence with the applicant on this because we did not get a Felco certified plan through some lateness and stuff. And so I I ask you, Chris, to come on the board because you would have to ask for a continuance. But the other reason I wanted you to come is that I did want you to have a sense of the board on this one. So you'd have a chance to present it and then answer any questions just so that you would know where you're operating here. So if you want to go ahead and tell us what your client wants to do.
Chris Childs from Patriot Builders. Tim Stevens, the homeowner, is also on the call. I'm not sure if he's on that. So we submitted the application back in March. And at the time, we were having a hard time getting the survey, a new survey plan from the engineer. So we submitted the application with the intention of where we wanted to place the garage and with a note that clearly stated that this plan is not certified, we will follow up with a certified plan. I did receive a certified plan in April. That certified plan, and shortly after that, the meeting was canceled and postponed, et cetera. So that plan never made it to, it never got submitted. I did submit it, I attempted to submit it last week. I don't think it was attached, so I submitted again on Monday and on Tuesday of this week. And I believe again today because I still, I think there was an issue with receiving email or what have you.
Right.
That's just the background of the certified plan. So I hope you have that now. I don't know if you do or not. But you should have that. So what we're proposing is to construct a detached garage within the required front yard setback. And you had, Madam Chair, you had raised a couple of concerns in your email. One being, what is the reason for shifting it away from where you could build it as of right? And the main reason is to create a little more separation between the house and the garage to add a little more daylight, to allow more daylight to come into the house. Also, there's an existing driveway there, so we wanted to align the garage with that existing driveway. And in terms of the site itself, it's a very, it's an odd shaped lot. It's a tight site. There are three domestic wells in proximity that kind of keep the buildings. There's not much room to put the buildings where they ideally should go. So we just felt that, and all of that is the shape of the lot where we're encroaching a setback. It's a front property line at the cul-de-sac, but that same property line becomes a budding property line to another property because of the shape of it. So it's kind of an odd setup. So we just felt that encroaching that line would not be substantially detrimental at all to the neighborhood. So that's the concern. We just talked about the certified plot plan. And then there was another mention of stakes not being in the ground. The stakes are in place. They were there. And I believe four board members went and made site visits, met with the homeowner. He showed them the stakes. I believe what happened there is the stakes were placed originally where the originally proposed garage was going to be built within, which conformed and could have been built as of right. The homeowner moved the stakes to where he would like to put the garage. We had a surveyor come out, survey those stakes, locate them on this new certified plot plan. So this certified plot plan indicates where those stakes actually are. And it also matches with the plan that I originally submitted back in March. I believe that's all I have and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and I did not have any letters on this one. And is there anyone from the audience who has anything to say about this one before I go to the board? Okay, um, so, Will?
Well, you know, normally we look at these in a favorable light when there's something physically that just doesn't allow you to do it, not aesthetically. And I just sort of have a problem granting this when it's just an aesthetic reason to violate the setback. On the other hand, I drove out to the site as well, didn't get out of my car, but I could see where it was. And it is, it's not going to affect any neighbors that I can see. So I'm sort of torn. I just don't know. Given the fact that it can be built closer, we should set that sort of precedent to allow a violation of a setback when it doesn't need to, doesn't physically need to be done. That's my comment.
Manny?
I have pretty much the same problems with this. If we have a conforming lot with a house on it, why do we want to put a garage into the setback and make it non-conforming? I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want that. And I don't think our bylaws allows that. The plans, on the plans, the roof overhang is three and a half feet towards the front. And there is an apron that would be under that. I don't know if legally it would create more intrusion in the setback, if that would count. But I'm totally against putting the garage into the setback. And if you can do it by right, I think it should be done. And not create a non-conforming property.
Mick?
Yeah, I'm the same. I'm not in favor of creating a non-conformity when you already have it. You can build by right. And I wouldn't be in favor of granting a special permit. I don't think it meets the criteria. Aesthetically has never been one of our reasons, so I will be enough.
And Trevor?
I completely agree with everything that's been said. I'm not, I'm not sure what the, if there are any even pre-existing non-conformities, it seems to be a conforming house, a conforming lot. And I don't know that this wouldn't even potentially require a variance to create a new non-conformity where none exists now. So yeah, I would not look favorably upon this.
And that is what I wanted you to hear. I'm not going to poll the rest of the board members. But basically, our feeling, we aren't, we don't normally create a non-conformity. We frequently give people relief when their lot is non-conforming and they can't do anything until they can get some relief. But in this case, we would be creating a non-conformity, and I agree with Trevor. I don't, I'm not even sure we can legally do that. But there would be no criteria for a variance. So I wanted you to hear that because I and I do see your hand, Mr. Stevens, so I will, I will call on you. I wanted you to hear that because rather than asking for a continuance, I was thinking you might actually just want to withdraw this proposal altogether. But I'm going to call on Mr. Stevens because I see he wants to speak.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Madam Chairman and board members. Yeah, no, I can completely understand where Will and Manny and a couple of others have agreed in terms of the aesthetics. I don't necessarily agree. The house was designed so that the master bedroom, the main house was designed so the master bedroom was on the east side of the house. So we get a tremendous amount of sunlight coming in in the morning, which was on purpose. We always knew that we were going to be constructing the detached garage later. So when the house was designed, the driveway was put in, in an area where we thought would be a good place to have a garage so that we can have some daylight, as Chris said, between both the garage and the house. So I don't know if it's necessarily an aesthetic issue that the board has just referenced there. I think it is beyond that. It certainly would make our lives a little bit easier and feel like we've got a house that we like to live in and enjoy. Five feet doesn't seem like a whole heck of a lot to ask for from the board. When Chris and I were talking about this, we thought about the cul-de-sac that we're on here and the fact that it probably would even offer up a better, you know, sort of picturesque look in the neighborhood, having a garage a little bit closer or in on that setback as well. And as Chris pointed out, the lot doesn't really lend itself to, you know, certainly keeping that daylight between the two buildings. It just means that we have to go a little bit closer and would certainly ask that you guys consider, you know, extending us that five additional feet. Sounds like you're not so much in favor of it, but I'd be happy to address any other questions. I'm flabbergasted, to be honest with you, that we wouldn't be able to get an additional five feet on a cul-de-sac, so.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I'll go, I just, we're being asked to create a non-conformity where none exists. We haven't done that before on the zoning board. It's not whether it's five feet, two inches, four inches. It's the fact that we've been asked to create a non-conformity. It's something we haven't done. I noticed on the building that you have a studio apartment upstairs on the garage. You can always build a smaller garage. I mean, it's just, it's very hard to create a non-conformity where one doesn't exist. It's something we haven't done before on the board. And it's not about whether it's five feet, two feet, or six inches. It's just creating a non-conformity.
I appreciate that, Mick. And just to address your question in terms of the space above the garage, it's not an apartment. It's clearly not an apartment for us.
That's how you've decided.
This is a second home at this point for us. And if we wanted to rent this place out over the last two years, we would have done that. I do not want to rent to anybody. I have four kids. And I'm looking forward to having grandkids and a little bit more space so that I can push my family out into a nice space above the garage, especially my daughter who likes to take over the kitchen, so. Yeah.
We certainly understand why you would like to do that. But our position, I mean, zoning laws pass two-thirds of town meeting. It's very hard to get two-thirds of Wellfleet to agree to anything. And so where you've got, you know, and we do see a lot of places where- And so where you've got, you know, and we do see a lot of places where they were established before zoning. They aren't conforming and we may have to give them some relief. But on a conforming lot, we are not like, not going to be likely to create any, as Mick says, not even a one, one foot non-conformity when we don't have one. So.
So you're going to be asking me to, so, okay, great. All right, listen, there's nothing I can do other than continue to go around in circles here, but you're going to create a little bit more cost for me to change the entire driveway and landscaping and and even you know, the building itself. So.
So, so your options here, since you, since you actually have five noes here. So, and this is why I wanted you to hear that because I had a feeling you would have five noes. The, the options are to either, I, I know that we don't have a signed plan, so we would continue this. But we would continue this for no reason because we would then turn it down. So my strong recommendation is just to withdraw the application.
No, we'll withdraw and we'll have to reconsider. And I appreciate the time and we would have gone first. Maybe we should have grown some cannabis out here so that we can supply the pot shop that just got approved. And that would have helped, helped the situation.
Well, you, well, you still could.
You still can.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
You know, someone mentioned variance and I'm wondering, would the fact that enforcement of the bylaw in putting the garage, you know, thirty feet away from that property line, that would put it twenty feet, you know, it would put it within twenty feet of the house. And again, based on the shape of the lot, there's really no other place that the, the garage could go. And there's no other place the house could have gone, by the way, because the well is back there. So the house had, it's not like we could have just put the house further to the west. Is, is there any, is there any argument for a variance? I know we couldn't do that tonight, but.
No. No, there really isn't.
Yeah. It's, it's very, very hard, Chris, to get, get, get a variance in this state is, is almost impossible. So, yeah, it's, it wouldn't be any of the cri, any of the criteria.
Yeah, listen, Chris, I appreciate it, the application. Manny, Will, Janet, Rhetha, Trevor, everybody on the board.
I'm town of Wellfleet.
Town of Wellfleet, appreciate the time. Pleasure meeting everybody. We'll, we'll move this house closer to the building and we'll regret it for the next ten, fifteen years. And hopefully we'll, we'll start to enjoy it ten, fifteen years later after a few drinks. I wake up in the morning and I say, where's my sunlight? And then I'm going to grow some pot and smoke a ton of it.
So I think I need a motion to accept a withdrawal of this application.
I'll motion it.
You're quiet now. Trevor's, Trevor moved? Do I have a second? I saw Manny's light first. Manny is second. Now I have to poll the board. Will?
I, yes.
Yeah. Manny?
Yeah.
Nick?
Yes.
Trevor?
Hi.
And Sharon is I. Okay. Thank you very much. And we go to our last case, which is, hello. Over here.
Manny will say goodnight.
Oh, yes. Manny will say goodnight. Manny is recusing himself, as is Mick, I believe, from this. Right, Mick?
Do we have enough people if I recuse myself?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, really.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to set the board for, you know, Chris, help me with the number again because.
Twenty oh seven.
Okay. And that is twenty Briar Lane and the board will be Will and Trevor. And where am I? Rhetha and myself. And did I do that? One, two, three, four, and, and Janet. Okay. And there you go, Ben.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Again, hello, everybody. This, this is Ben Zender and I'm here. And Thor Baum and Maya Becker on the line for the owners of Twenty Briar Lane. We have an application in front of you for a, for a, for a special permit to, or use special permit to create a use with Maya's personal services business, which is a, you know, she, she does physical training for people. I believe, Maya, you can jump anytime, yoga, other types of training at the site. The site is, as you probably have all been by, it's on Ryder Court and Briar Lane. The proposal is to remove the existing building. And just so the board understands, the property is right now under a, an eighteen-month demolition delay that was imposed by the, by the historic commission, which means they, they really can't do anything. Maya and Thor have been looking for a location for Maya's business for some time now. They've looked at literally, you know, over ten or twelve properties. Maya is operating over at the Mac building behind Mac Shack on Commercial Street. She has been given a little bit of a breath in the sense that Mac has offered her a lease so she can stay in there in the short term, so they can get this project done or find another place for her to locate her business. You should have as part of your package a, a plot plan that identifies, you know, all the merits of the project, including the height, the zoning table and parking calculations. And looking at that plan, I, I believe that plan is not accurate. You know, and just when I was listening to your other, your other managers, I was listening to this and looking at this plan. It lists on the parking calculations, four and a half spaces for three apartments. That's correct. Because the proposal is for two, two new apartments of seven hundred and fifty square feet, two, two-bedroom apartments on the second floor of the new building. And then there's another unit that's on the property. But the non-residential spaces calculated as one space for three employees. I think that should be one space because Maya has one other employee that's there. She's over there, but she parks across the street at her own home, which is on the other side of Ryder Court. And then the engineer has one space per hundred and fifty square feet of floor at twenty-five spaces. The actual commercial space in use is eighteen hundred and fifty-seven square feet. It's the, it's the lower floor of this building that you can see from your floor plans. I calculate that to be twelve point three parking spaces. So rounded down to the nearest whole space, that would be twelve spaces. Plus one for the employees, plus four and a half for the, for the, for the residential units. I, I come as twelve, four sixteen, I commit at eighteen spaces. So, which is exactly what's provided. Now, I understand that that hits the threshold for development of significant impact, but I don't believe that we're asking this board to reduce the number of spaces down below what is required by the, by the, by the zoning code. At least if we use that calculation of one space for every hundred and fifty square feet of floor area, which is what the zoning bylaw calls for, for non-residential uses in residential areas. So I think that's the closest categorization. So this board may want to discuss, Sharon, you know, whether or not you want it for me to continue with this presentation.
Probably not. But I just had a question for you, which is that the, the plan does show eighteen spaces, right? That's, that's what.
Of them, it does. Yeah. I had to look carefully, but it does, it does. It's showing four along Briar Lane. And then you can see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, including the handicapped spot on the south side of the building. And then there are three more along the east side of the property near the building. So I, I believe, of course, the members want to review this again, but I, I believe that we're showing the number that are required.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
So, and now with regard to the development of significant impact, if the board is going to ask for that, that advisory opinion from the planning board, I think is, is appropriate. I would ask that the board waive the requirement of either a fiscal impact study or a traffic study. Because I, I think that this is the type of project that this board can get a handle on, both in terms of traffic and in terms of the fiscal impacts of the project without having Maya and Thor have to go out and hire an expert to tell you what you probably can have a better handle on through your own common sense. So I'm hoping the board will waive those two requirements as has been common practice in the past for my applicants that have developments of significant impact of a minor nature.
And you, the planning board is not going to ask you for that, you do not think?
You know, it, it, the way the bylaw is structured, it says that a town board can ask for it. It doesn't specifically say the zoning board. So I, I think the planning board could ask for it. I, I know that, for example, in the, the matter you heard first tonight, there was a traffic study that was done as part of the development of significant impact. But that project probably had a lot more, both impact and also questions regarding impact.
Right.
So, you know, I'm hopeful that this board can, can understand Maya's business and, and this location and, and apply your own, you know, your own logical intuition to what the impacts may be of this business without having to have to go out and have an expert tell you something. I'm not even sure what they would say. So same thing with the fiscal impacts of this. I think, I think we can describe for you the operation and you can, you can judge for yourselves what the fiscal impacts of this would be on the town. So.
Okay. So let me make things clear for people here that this triggered development of significant impact. I heard from the planning board that they needed to see this before we deliberated on it. So it's really before us tonight for an immediate continuance. I don't want to cut off anyone who want, has something they would like to say tonight that they don't want to, that, that is a burning issue. But this is something we have to wait and hear from the planning board first before. And it's not, I, I just, good, I see your, I see your hand and I will call on you in just one sec. It, this project again is under an eighteen-month delay. So the fact that they have to go to the planning board and we don't make a decision tonight does not add any further delay to, to the project, as I understand it. And I am going to call on the applicant here. I'm working on it. There you go.
So Thor Baum.
Yep.
This is our project. So my question was that you said that the planning board, the planning board approached you on this project?
Yes.
All right.
I was.
I was wondering on that. So.
Well, it was my error because the, the bylaw says that when we get one with more than ten parking spaces, I am to transmit it forthwith to the planning board. I did not transit, do it forthwith to the planning board. I guess I was sort of in a COVID nightmare or something. But at any rate, the planning board did learn of the project and say, wait, you know, you, they need to come to us first.
Well, my question to that is that we existingly are only asking for nine additional.
Yeah, but it's, it, it triggers the review because of how many on the lot.
But we already have.
Yeah, it still does.
Okay. Fair enough. I'm just saying.
You're, you're better off going to them.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything from the board?
Yeah, I have one question. Just, I'm just curious. There's a garage and a shed and a cottage. Now, are, are those staying?
Yes. The cottage is going to be part of the year-round rentals. So we'll have a total of three year-round rentals on the property. And then.
Okay. So that's part, there's two in the main, the main building and one in the cottage?
No, they're, yes, correct. Correct.
I just want to make sure we got the right parking. In other words, you got the parking for, for the cottage? And how many, and how many units are going to be on, on the second floor of the house?
Two.
So three in all?
Three in all. Yeah.
I got you. Okay. Okay.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
About your clients who are going to come to the fitness aspect of it. What's the capacity for that?
My classes range from six to nine people per class and then private individual trainings. And usually only one group class happens normally at a time. And one private training. So max is eight people in the space.
And the workout areas, are they different people for that? Or?
What do you mean, different people for that?
I mean, other than, well, it just seems like to me that the space, there was more space for people to do workouts and whatnot. That kind of thing, fitness kinds of things.
Yep. And I've always been a strong believer in small group classes. It's how I like started hardcore. So you're in a group class, but it's small individual attention. So it's more personal instruction. And now in the time of our new normal, it brings me back even more to the basis of small group personal training. So the smaller I can keep it, the more I'd like to.
So you would have enough parking for those people?
Yes, yes, definitely. Okay.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Maya informed me today, this is not a gym, meaning it's not a walk-in gym where people have memberships and come and go. This is where the people that come in are all scheduled for classes.
Okay.
Say that again, Ben?
Thank you, Brad. This is not a gym such as you might be thinking where people can just come in and work out and then leave. Maya schedules her clients to come in for their classes. So there will be group classes. Or she may schedule somebody to come in and have a private session, but it's not a drop-in type of gym like you might be used to with other.
That clarifies this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
Ben, can I ask you, when you come back in again, would you, because it's just the, the engineer so messed up the parking calculations. Can you really give us a breakdown of the square feet of every, you know, really sort of idiot-proof it? Can, can you idiot-proof it for, for me so I can quickly look at the, the first floor, the basement, the square footage?
I will. I mean, you know, in reality, you know, the residential spaces, you calculate based on the number of units.
Right, right. So I, I don't need that, but.
Yeah, you don't need that. So in, in reality, the only, the only commercial space that's on the property is, is, is the lower floor of the building, which is, which is, which is Maya's business. And, and that's one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven square feet. But what I will do is I will, I will provide a separate calculation for the board, identifying each of the spaces on the property and what they're classified as and what I believe the number of spaces would be allocated to each of those spaces. So.
Good. That, thank you. Yeah.
That would help.
Am I muted? I don't know.
No, you're not muted, Andy.
So Ben, you're going to go to the, the planning board, my old home.
Yeah, you should have waited a couple of weeks.
No, that's okay. But further to Will's point, and that is if, if you could designate which, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this question. But I think it would be helpful to designate those parking spaces that will be specifically designated for tenants as opposed to clients of the business.
I can tell you that also now.
I didn't hear what Maya said.
Our idea was that when we were trying to plan out the, the parking, that we were.
We already have a parking lot, right? We have an existing parking lot.
I can't, I'm sorry, Maya. I cannot mute him and keep you.
Neither can I. That we were keep, we were trying to keep Ryder Court residential for our neighbors, for us. It's a residential road. We wanted to keep it safe. Not safe. It's not the wrong word. But residential. So we had designed it that the parking spots that are on Ryder Court are for the residents of the building. And all commercial would then go into the parking lot of Twenty Briar Lane. And we would kind of cut off the entrance that there is now for the parking of Twenty Briar Lane that's on Ryder Court, that we were going to separate that out so that just the residents for the apartments could access the Ryder Court and the other ones would be able to get the parking lot another direction.
What I will do is I will designate on the plan which spaces are designated for the residential, which designated for the commercial aspect. That, that might be helpful.
That's what I was asking. Thank you very much.
Okay. And, and Janet has a question.
I was, through you, Madam Chairman, I was wondering, Maya, do you have a lot more clients in the summer? Is it that type of business?
Um, well, we're on Cape Cod, you know. There is always a little bit of influx in the winter versus summer, but not a huge amount. I've definitely done a, I think, a good job of building up my winter clientele. And my year-round clients take up most of the spaces for my class spots. But I get a little bit of the shoulder season clients that overlap and are here for the longer duration. Um, and I get a small influx for weekly visitors, but they've been visiting me now for a few years, and it's not a huge amount, I have to say.
Yes, um, let me ask it this way. On your busiest, at your busiest time, how many people might, the maximum people might be in that, in your space at, at, at one time?
At one possible time, like the week of Fourth of July?
Ten people at a time, twenty people at a time, six people at a time?
During COVID or non-COVID?
None. Let's talk none.
Our new normal or not, or old normal?
Old normal, the old normal.
Um, I'd say, in the middle of the summer, the height of the summer, we're talking about fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think if, unless anybody has any questions, I need to move to continue now. Chris, we, we have to figure out what the date is for that. We don't really know what the, um, planning board's schedule is.
We do not know their schedule, and I'd also like to ask Ben, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, think that next new plan, I don't want to give the planning board what we have now if a new plan is coming in.
True.
Uh, yeah, well, the only, I mean, the only changes I'm gonna make to the plan, Chris, are to sketch in, um, which spaces are residential, which are commercial, and to provide a separate zoning parking table and, and eliminate that. So I think I can do that very, very quickly.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I would think if we, and the planning board only needs, um, average, they don't, I believe they don't, they need, they don't need a heavy advertising time for planning, but I think you have to put another agenda. Um, I don't believe there's any requirement that they notify a butters or publish in the newspaper, other than their agenda.
Yeah, I think it just goes on town website.
Yeah, so I, I think thirty days is plenty, Chris, for us.
Okay.
So you want to go out to our next meeting, which is going to be, I think, July ninth?
I've got it here. That one I actually do have. Yeah, July ninth.
Okay.
Paperwork, well, that's different, that's applications, never mind. Yeah, July ninth.
I, I, I would, I would like to have that date. Um, if for some reason we can't have everything done before the ninth, I would sort of like to be able to request a continuance for another, another cycle if we can't get it in, but I, I think we can.
I think that's fair.
There's no real redesign involved here, so.
Okay.
I would ask for that continuance if the board's willing.
All right.
Can, can I ask one more question, just so Ben know what I'm thinking about? Ben, the, the building plans are called pro- preliminary. Well, when are we gonna get actual plans? Because I, the, the, the requirement, the, the regs say you gotta submit plans for what you're gonna build.
I think the build, I think the designer is, is, is thinking they're preliminary as opposed to construction drawings. Um, we can certainly remove the word preliminary if you'd like. Well, I mean, that, we can easily do that.
I just think that makes me feel better.
Yeah, no, I want you to feel good.
But if we, if we stamp those, and you've taken the word preliminary off, we stamp them, that's what you have to build.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me just make a note.
So you can come back and change it, you know, I mean, but, but we, we don't like to approve or whatever, look at, you know.
I don't want to go down, just grab it all.
I think Thor has a comment on that, if you would.
Oh, I have a question on, so when you ask for, if you ask for it to remove the preliminary, is it based on a square footage, is it based on a footprint, is it based on, because if it's based on a style, then that might make a more.
Yeah, no, the, if you look at the, the ordinance, the bu- the bylaws, they, I believe they talk about elevations, and so we really, you know, I, I know when.
Your elevations are on there.
When Cumberland Farms came, when they've changed their, the, the view of, of their building, they came back and asked us for, 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 uh, to approve their revised building plans.
Right.
So for, for an, for an aesthetic look, or for, for?
Thor, why don't we talk about this offline, okay?
Yeah.
We can work that, I mean, that's not a.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll make sure that, I'll make sure that the plans that this board is reviewing next time don't have the word preliminary on them.
And that they are, in fact, what you want. Okay, all right. Any other questions before I ask?
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
Should we mention the letter we received?
Oh, wait, yeah.
All right.
Uh, you know, I don't think so. I think I will read that letter when we're actually hearing the case.
Okay.
Because I think, you know, we'd have to read it again.
Okay.
And so I think I'm just gonna hold off on, on that, and I'm, I'm gonna hold off on the comments from the audience, because we're actually not deliberating this case yet.
Okay.
Right, so, so I need a motion to continue.
I'll move to continue to July ninth.
Okay, and I need, that was Trevor, and I need a second.
Second.
Janet was the second. All in favor, Will?
Aye.
Retha?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. Okay, all right, we'll see you on July ninth, unless you can't.
Yep.
Can't make it.
Thank you all, and good evening, everyone.
Right, good night.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Chris, we have, uh, Chris, we have minutes, I believe, to approve?
It's March twelfth.
Yep, March twelfth. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of March twelfth.
I will move that we approve those minutes.
That's Janet, and a second?
I second.
Retha, all right, and we have to go through this. Will?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Retha?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And Andy, even though you weren't there, you can always approve, approve minutes, you can't move them.
Dane.
I approve them.
Thank you, and Sharon is an aye. You can approve minutes, that's Robert's rules of order, you can, you can vote.
If Jen is satisfied with them, I am satisfied.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I did want to say that in, in going to, um, replace Bruce, I went down the list of seniority. I asked Manny if he wanted to be vice chairman, he did not. I asked Mick if he wanted to be vice chairman, and he said he did. So, um, so that is the thing, I don't know if we need to vote on that, or?
We do.
I think we do.
Okay, so, so can I have a motion to approve Mick as vice chair?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that, but only because Mick's not here.
Okay. All right. And Will?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Retha?
Aye.
Trevor? And Sharon is aye. All right, now I need a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
And I need a second.
Second.
All in favor. Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
And Retha?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. All right, Chris.
You did a great job, Sharon.
You did, good job.
We didn't, we didn't drop anybody. It all seems to have.
It worked out well, worked out well.
It all seems to have worked, so, and I'm sure we'll be doing it this way in July as well. I don't.
It might be a lot longer than that.
It might well be a lot longer than that. I don't know when anybody would want to sit in it. We had, at, at one point tonight, we had forty-three people. So, you know, that means that, you know, there's no way forty-three people would have come, would have been able to come to this meeting.
No.
Any other way.
Are you done with Cape Cod cannabis now?
We are done with Cape Cod cannabis.
Until we can appeal.
What?
Until we receive an appeal.
Until we receive an appeal. And, but the appeal won't come to us, it will go to the court, so we are done.
Sharon, did you say that you, did it get approved?
It got approved. Yep. They, uh, they did a really good job.
Yeah, they, they, they did do a good job.
Of listening to what we said and answering.
I mean, they, from the beginning, when it was a very, very poor presentation, they've really come a long, long way in responding to the questions and the concerns that, uh, we and the community had.
And the interesting thing tonight was that the only, um, a butter was the, was David for the thing.
Are we still recording?
What? Oh, yeah, we're still recording, we better hang up. Yeah, okay, wait a minute, I can stop the recording, can I?
No, don't do that.
I don't know, no, I won't do that. So off we go.
I'm gonna leave.
Stay safe, everyone. Bye, Chris will talk.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye, and I can end it for all.